...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Beaton.
Here.
Mayor Zalinski.
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Thank you. Public hearings. Public hearings on the Downtown Development Authority Development Plan. The current DDA Development Plan and TIF sunsets on March 1st, 2020. The Downtown Development Authority approved a new development plan for council consideration. In order for the city council to consider adopting a new Downtown Development Authority Plan, a public hearing is required. At this time, the public has an opportunity to comment on the Downtown Development Authority Development Plan. No actions anticipated at the conclusion of the public hearing. This item will be under consideration later this evening. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on the Downtown Development Authority Plan? Yes, please step to the podium. There is a sign-in sheet. Would you please sign in? State your name and address.
Sure. Jeff Gordon, 411 River Street.
Sure.
And I wanted to come in here and encourage you to renew the TIF, the DDA program. I see a lot of opportunity associated with the DDA. I recognize the benefit that the city gets from it. I'm somewhat concerned about the loss of revenue that basically would, you know, spread out to the county. And there's some key programs that the DDA garners the city an opportunity that I think are helpful to restaurants, et cetera. For example, a liquor license can be acquired for $20,000 if we have a DDA. If we don't, its market value is about $60,000. That and many other programs out there, if we want to move this community forward and bring more restaurants and entertainment into the downtown, I view the DDA to be critical. Thank you.
Denister Horst, 63 Clay Street. Two questions. The county and college tax increment portion is included in the funding of the TIF plan. And I understand from times past that these entities had to agree to relinquish their portion of the TIF revenue. And I assume that has happened because it's included in the funding, but I didn't see it anywhere in the text of the plan. And second, I'm wondering why the detail of the plan is exquisitely figured out financially, but the bottom line is out of balance.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Does that warrant the answer or?
At the appropriate time.
I ask two questions.
We're, you're, this is an opportunity for you to comment. We're not, we're not, this is an opportunity for you to comment on this subject.
There are questions.
Well, they're not out of line. We will work on getting you some answers, okay? Citizens comment on agenda-related items. Is there any citizens who'd like to comment on agenda-related items tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are on the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include: Approval of minutes, cash balance, revenue and expenses, quarterly financial update, quarterly investment update, notification regarding next work session, consideration of five cap incorporated to hold a walk for warmth on Saturday, February 15th. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. New business. Consideration of approving a contract with the state of Michigan for the 2020 trunkline maintenance. Every five years, the city council or the city contracts with the Michigan Department of Transportation to perform maintenance on US 31 trunkline within the city limits. The state reimburses the city for the costs associated with the work. At this time, council could take action, enter into a state trunkline agreement, contract with the Michigan Department of Transportation, and authorize the Public Works Director and Street Administrator Jeff W. McCullough to execute the agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. What is the amount that they'll, is there a maximum amount they reimburse us for?
Each year, they provide a budget to us based on prior year's work that we've done. And, but we get reimbursed based on kind of like a time and material. So if that contract is $65,000 and we're, we only spend $60,000 of it, they pay us for the 60. If we go over to $70,000, they pay us that 70. And the rates that we charge are audited rates for our labor and overhead, and then they provide a, an equipment rate for all of our equipment that we use on the highway as well.
Okay. That's the only thing that I didn't absorb when I was looking at the paperwork.
Another thing that actually the city attorney had asked is, they also issue us transportation work authorizations, or TWAs. So when we operate the 31 bridge for them, they write a separate work authorization that reimburses us for the direct cost of operating the bridge as well. If they have money left over in their budget and want us to do some paving upgrades, it's easier for us to do that work, bid it out, design it, and construct it. So they will also issue TWAs for specific work items like that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. McCullough, in your opinion, what is the tangible benefit for us having this contract with this, with MDOT?
The benefit goes both ways. MDOT does this with all of their trunk lines that are within city limits or within counties. That way, you're not, you don't have a duplication of staff and equipment for things like snowplowing, street sweeping, items like that. For the city, we get a direct benefit, especially by operating the bridges, because they pay for three of those employees six months out of the year, and the city gets those employees for the other three months out of that year during the wintertime when it's, when, when the workload is heavier. And then a portion of that workload gets reimbursed back from the state as, as we plow the highway as well. So it really works, works both ways. It's a win-win, I believe.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of adoption of the Manistee Downtown Development Authority Development and Tax Increment Financing Plan amendments to the ordinance adopted April 2nd, 1985, amended April 3rd, 1989, and amended September 16th, 2008. The Manistee DDA is proposing amendments to the current development and tax increment financing plan. The amendments include identified projects and budgets estimated for the organization over the next 25 years. The amendment additionally includes attachments requested by the Manistee City Council of the service, of the city service agreement and economic development agreement with the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce. At this time, council could take action to adopt the Manistee DDA amendments for the development of the tax increment financing plan. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Questions?
I'd like to make a few comments. The last couple of years, working with the DDA has, has not been a real smooth process between the city and the DDA. But I would like to point out that it's remarkable what has happened in one year's time. We've always been trying to hammer out a decent service agreement between the DPW department and the DDA, and that has been accomplished. We also were very, 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 very happy to see that, I'm happy to see that they have come to an agreement with the Chamber for Economic Development. That puts us on the same page. And that's one thing that we needed to be aligned with. We need to work on the same page. There's some other issues that still haven't been resolved, but I do see a lot of hope in this particular agreement. I'm a little bit concerned about the length of time, the 25 years, because typically they're, they're 20. But then I, I think back on what are our, what are our options? Let's say five, six years down the road, the DDA isn't, isn't working as well as we would like it to. We do have some options. We have to approve their budget once a year. So if we don't approve their budget, they, they can cease to exist. I don't think that's a great option, but it is the one thing that we do have power on. So I think everybody understands that now, and I would be very happy to work with the DDA and the change in direction that they're going. So I'm pretty optimistic about the TIF plan right now.
Anybody else?
I took in, I went walking down the street today and talked to some merchants, and I think there's a lot of, I think the DDA needs to sit down with their, the people down there, because there's still a lot of concern. And some of the questions they, they threw at me was, what have we really gotten from the DDA since 1985? Five million's already been invested. A lot of the stores are still empty. Lot of questions, and I think you people ought to be meeting with these people because something's wrong here. I agree with Linda, things maybe have changed in the past year. I've attended some of the meetings, and, I mean, they're looking at, you know, a lot of the people probably don't see what you're voting on in the meetings down there, where you bought the cleaners for $40,000 and sent, gave it to the tribe for a dollar. Talk about a lot of the events that have been dropped by DDA. They also picked up the one program. Just the collections, the 25-year contract, a lot of people didn't agree with, thought that was way too long. The loss of revenue for downtown, for the city. So I think we need to, do be more talking on this.
Anybody else?
Would somebody be willing to answer the questions that came up during the town hall about county approval and the, the difference between estimates in the, in the plan and the balanced budget in the, in the financial statement?
I'll take that, since I was on the committee that drafted the document. The first one with regards to approval of jurisdictions, because this is an amendment of an existing TIF plan, that is not a necessary step. If however, the TIF plan had expired or would expire come March 1st, to create a new one then would require all of those approvals. So that's why this is an amendment to an existing plan. The second question with regards to the revenues versus expenses. The revenues in the TIF plan, well, both are, you know, you're predicting the future, so that's challenging to begin with. On the revenue side, we've taken a very conservative approach of a one-half percent per year increase in taxable value over a period of 25 years. That's typically less than the rate of inflation has been historically. If you take that over 25 years, you don't actually grow your revenue base that much. So that's a conservative looking at the revenues. On the expenses side, you know, we are looking at, there's, there's a lot of need. So, you know, what's in the plan are a lot of proposed projects. We wanted to make sure that we had enough, if the revenue grew faster than that, that there would be projects that are scoped out. But obviously, you know, we can't do things that we don't have revenue for. So the amount of work that we actually can accomplish in that expense plan will be ultimately determined by what our revenues are over this time period.
Thank you.
Sure.
Also, my only comment is, you know, I think that the DDA has done a great job, and what people don't know is, these are volunteers as well. These aren't paid positions, and they put in probably a thousand hours or more into developing this plan for the city. And I do see, I do think that, that some of the things that they've done recently are creating a new renaissance for Manistee, especially in the downtown. So I look forward to the future and all the new projects that are, are in the works and in the plans.
My only comment is that I've been attending DDA meetings for a lot of years, and this past year has been a breath of fresh air for me. I've seen more happen with the DDA in the, in the past year than I've seen in a long time, in my opinion. Positive movement moving forward. And I've said this before, I don't want to give the county back any money. I want to keep it in our downtown. Council does have control over how that money's spent. We don't have to approve their budget, or the budget like Ms. Beaton talked about. We do have control, and working together, I think we can accomplish an awful lot. And I see that happening now, where before we were kind of sitting on the, each end of a different table and not, not accomplishing much. So let's continue to work together. With that, please take the roll.
Oh.
I'm sorry?
I'm talking. I'm sorry. I agree with Councilmember Grabowski. I think if there's some disgruntled merchants downtown, then it's the DDA's responsibility to see what they can do about resolving their issues. And I would like them to not just walk away from tonight's signed few, that we got this TIF plan passed. I want them to walk away saying, we still have some work to do, but feel confident if we do pass this, that, that you have the support of council.
If I understand this motion correctly, we're not voting on a new TIF plan, we're voting on amending the current TIF plan. Is that correct? Okay. With that, please take the roll.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of a budget amendment 2020-2 for fiscal year end June 30th, 2020. The city of Manistee is required by state law to ensure the actual expenditures do not exceed budget amounts. Over the course of the current fiscal year, unanticipated and unbudgeted events and/or council-approved expenditures have occurred. The proposed budget amendments address expenditures associated with these events to ensure compliance with state statutes regarding appropriations. Mr. Bradford, do you want to kind of go over? Oh, he's already there. Let me get my bifocals. Go ahead, sir.
Sure. Tonight, council, we have four different accounts that we need a budget amendment for. The first one is the holiday and vacation sellback in the manager's office. Longtime executive assistant retired this year and was able to sell those benefits back, and those were not anticipated when the budget was prepared. For the elections, council previously approved a new tabulator, and there was, in that motion, it said to amend the budget, but I wanted to formalize it as part of our normal thing. So there's a budget amendment for elections for that tabulator. For the fire department, they went together to buy some foam for a variety of the departments, including ours, and they're going to get reimbursed for the other township's portion of that. So that needs an amendment to, to amend the expense side. We'll be getting reimbursed for most of that, though. And then for the motor pool, council previously approved the purchase of the new travel vehicle because the transmission went out on the old one, and we needed to formalize that with a budget amendment as well. So those are the four items that are on here. Any questions?
What is the total amount?
Yeah. So it's 37, about $50,000. They're not all out of the same fund, obviously, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Bradford while he's up here?
Is, is there any anticipation that, that this won't be able to be covered without going into?
No. The, the travel vehicle was slated for purchase, and actually, just a timing issue. And the amount of budget amendment required here in the general fund, it's way too early to, to know where we're going to be on the general fund, but we have ample fund balance to cover that if need be.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, council could take action to adopt budget amendment 2020-2 for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing number, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approving a contract for the Arthur Street Pump Station improvements. The city has publicly bid out improvements to the Arthur Street Pump Station. One bid was received from Elmer Crane and Dozer. Following value engineering, the bid was revised to $206,027. The engineer estimate is $165,000. In order to bring the project closer to the estimate, the bud, estimate and budget amount, a change order will be executed, which will include the Department of Public Works providing bypass pumping and traffic control. The project cost after the change order will be $164,077. A contract documents were prepared by Spicer Group and approved by the city manager. At this time, council could take action to award a construction contract to Elmer Crane and Dozer in the amount of $206,027, and a subsequent, and a subsequent change order reducing the contract price to $164,077, and authorize the mayor, city clerk, and public works director to execute the documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Is there going to be any challenges with the city having to take on the additional requirements in order for this contract to go forward as it's, it's being amended?
I don't think so. The bypass pumping that we've done, this will be the fourth, maybe fifth, time that we've done this on projects. The city purchased a Pioneer pump for about $46,000 five years ago or so, and since then, we've been able to use that, I, I believe it's five times now, and it's savings about $40,000 to $50,000 per time. So we, we keep paying for that pump and keep using it for the things we bought, we purchased it for, but it's been a great tool. In the way that we have to do the bypass pumping, we have to set up a lane closure on US 31, which we're trained for, have all the equipment. That lane closure will serve as the traffic control that they intended to do anyway. So this is a really easy way of us saving some money and getting the, the project at the budgeted amount.
Okay. Will there be assistance from the police department with the lane closures or?
No, it's, that's usually not necessary. We set up our related boards and then cone patterns and then the forewarning signs, so we do that routinely. And it doesn't have to be monitored. It's something that, we monitor it, but it's not something that's staffed. We set it up, we refuel the light board each day, and then just check it to make sure everything's in place, so.
Thank you.
Our final price would be $164,000 then?
As soon as the change order is executed, yes. We have to, we have to execute the contract, and then we can issue a change order to reduce it down to that amount.
We still have more than one bypass pump, really not?
We have one currently, and we've got a very small backup. And actually, we are getting bids on another pump to assist with the wastewater treatment plant improvements and the wet weather, actually, the wet weather and the high lake level issues that we're having, so.
I guess where I'm going with that is, if while we're using a bypass pump on Arthur Street, do we have a way, if we, something come up that we could use another pump in the?
Right. So that's the primary reason why we're pricing out another pump right now, but in the interim, we've got an agreement with the Tribe's Wastewater Treatment Plant that has a similar pump that we would use in a pinch.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of entering into a four-year installment purchase contract with the Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls Incorporated and DNK Truck Company to finance the previously approved purchase of a tandem axle plow truck and related equipment. On September 3rd, 2019, council approved the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment in the amount of $204,318. When approved, it was anticipated that financing arrangements would have to be made at a later date. The truck chassis is done and has been delivered to the equipment vendor for assembly. The equipment vendor will be paid upon delivery of the finished truck. At this time, council could take action to adopt a resolution to enter into a four-year installment purchase contract with Westshore Bank Truck and Trailer Specialties of Boeing Falls Incorporated and DNK Truck Company to finance the purchase of a plow truck and related equipment and further authorize the chief financial officer to execute any needed documents. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion or questions?
I have a question. Should I abstain from the vote, since I work at Westshore Bank?
I don't see a need for that, no.
Any other questions? Seeing, do you have one? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of approval of an invoice and draw request number one for USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase One. USDA Rural Development requires that invoices or construction projects they fund be approved by city council and submitted as a draw request on forms that they provide. The first draw request includes engineering, legal, and bond council invoices up to the date of closing. At this time, council could At this time, council could take action to approve invoices and draw request number one for the USDA Rural Development Wastewater Improvement Phase One. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Application for DDA Board. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the DDA Board. These are manager appointments. They require a motion, second, and council voted to support. The downtown applications have been received. We have openings for Downtown Development Authority, one vacancy for a resident member, term ending 6/30/21, and one vacancy for an interested member, term ending 6/30. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, I would like to appoint Bruce Allen for the resident member, term ending 6/30 of 21.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the-
Second.
Have a motion of support. I have a second. Any discussion, questions? Please take the roll.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
And for the vacancy for an interest member, I'd like to appoint James Bodry.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Have a second? Have support and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Notices, communications, and announcements of public services due to unforeseen circumstances will not be doing a report tonight. That moves us along to Concerns and Comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, or area of state involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Does there anyone who would like to make any comments tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to officials and staff. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, just wanted to let council know that staff had an opportunity to spend about an hour with Representative O'Malley yesterday. He came to town with the express purpose of getting information as to how the high water levels are impacting the city. We had a good discussion about that, about some opportunities he might pursue to help out at the state level. We ended up with touring the areas that we've experienced damages to the high water level. So just want to let you know it was a very good hour spent. I appreciate the fact that he did come here, has interest in trying to help communities throughout the state with all the problems associated with high water. And he's pursuing some things legislatively, and hopefully they'll bear fruit. So as always, you know, he has a big district, and he could have spent an hour anywhere, and he's spending here. So we're thankful for that. Beyond that, I have nothing else.
Mr. Taylor.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
City clerk.
Nothing, your honor.
Public safety. Finance.
Nothing, your honor.
Engineer.
Nothing, your honor, thank you.
DPW.
Nothing, your honor.
Did I miss anybody? I guess not. Ms. Pontiac.
I have a couple cards.
Okay.
So Tracy Lindeman. Bruce Faints, birthday. Seven years.
Lot of years.
Congratulations. And Brandon Nelson.
Thank you.
Anything else? Ms. Pontiac, get anything else? Grabowski.
If there's anything we'd be interested in going to despite having emergency training?
I pass that on to Public Safety Director Kozel, and so he's aware of it. I don't know. No, no, it would benefit probably the police or fire departments.
Mr. Shemansky.
February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. As you may guess, this is a really large issue for all of our schools, from junior high to high school. And there is also a, 11 February is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Day, and we're asked to wear orange to bring some attention to the issues involved with teen dating. And then the last thing is, I just wanted to remind people, you know, you've seen a lot about epidemic in China. Don't let us have one here. Get your flu shot if you haven't gotten one already. Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Cooper.
Nothing, your honor.
I would just like to ask the city manager if you could give us a list of the areas that you toured with O'Malley.
Well, we took him down to the First Street Overlook so he could take a look at the amount of riverwalk that's missing. Also able to look at the wall that's being compromised. We talked about the extent of the damage up and along that shoreline, both east and west of the boat launch. We took him back, we drove him past the south breakwater, even though it's not a city infrastructure. But just to emphasize the fact that it's almost underwater right now, and if we get another foot, it's just going to make the matters worse. Then we went to Fifth Avenue Beach, looked at, it was a perfect day because the beach was littered with all kinds of debris, man-made and natural. We talked about the amount of water that's coming down that cul-de-sac and negatively impacting that neighborhood and the fact that they're running some pumps, some of them 24/7. So we spent some time there. We talked a little bit about the problems that the homeowners on Dunes Drive are experiencing and how we might need to partner with them to help stabilize their bank. And then we finished up at the Arthur Street Boat Launch and looked at that. And Jeff talked at length about problems, he and Sean Middleton, at all of those areas. And, you know, one of the things that we made clear to the representative is that when we had made, throughout the years, when the city had made improvements, they had done, taken steps to protect from the water. And there was, you know, obviously, a certain amount of foresight. But I don't think anybody could foresee how far the water has risen and has overcome our protective measures. So the point I wanted to make is that we just hadn't put structures in place without thinking about how can we preserve that moving forward. It's just that the lake water has risen to levels that were not anticipated. So those are the areas. Then we talked about the Ninth Street Boat Launch and some other things in general terms.
Okay, thanks. I want to make sure Dunes Drive was mentioned because I've talked to some of them, and they're concerned because the public part of that beach area that's in front of their yards is pretty much underwater.
Right.
And then some, so.
Mr. Bradford, nothing? I have nothing. We move on to consideration for a closed session manager, for the manager, a closed session, annual evaluation and a union contract negotiation. City manager Tad Taylor has requested a closed session this evening as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, for discussion of the city manager's annual evaluation and Section 8C to discuss contract negotiations with the United Steelworkers. At this time, council could take action to proceed to a closed session under Section 8A and 8C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion and a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, please take the roll.
Councilmember Cooper.
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Zalinski.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Pontiac.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session.
Just engage, you know, we'd have a quarter, but we don't have a building.
It has to be, you said two-thirds.
Two-thirds, so that would be five.
So George, how do I do that with Jermaine was in the back?
Yeah, I think you-
Do I put anything on there or something?
I don't think you do it.
I just put, okay, all right. I just won't put her down. Thank you.
I'm not going to get a water bill about five dollars a month here, start my signing.
No, you won't. I thought about you earlier this week. Halle, I thought about you earlier this week. Because I had, I drove by your son's house. I thought, oh, the light's on during the day. So, yeah. Yeah.
You guys, you guys don't have to stay for the union stuff.
Okay.
Method, everybody does it a little different.
Well, we usually do, right?
Yeah.
All right.
So I'm always, i-if we overdo it, I think that's...
Probably better, that's what I do too, so, all right.
All right. We can't go yet.
That was nice.
Get ready though.
Yeah, so, good counter.
I motion we adjourn.
We need a motion to come back in session first.
Oh, I motion we come back in session.
I think motion we adjourn.
Wait, do we need a second?
I second the...
I may talk to adjourn.
Do we need a roll call, or can I say?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Aye.